Okay, those minutes have been approved as well. Next thing on our agenda is old business. And the first thing under the old business is our property code violations update.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that. I think last month I covered the property of sixteen eighty-five Heshua Road. That property had been cleared, had been resolved, had been dismissed. As far as Clayton Holmes and the Matthew French case, I don't think we need to go into executive session, but just the update is the judge made a ruling on our motion. For some judgment denied that, so the case will proceed and so we'll be in discovery. So I'm just letting you all know that if we need to go into executive session, if you want more information, we can do that. But beyond that, that's the status of that case. Martin Legan case, that has been reset decently to thirteen for USDA status. That's the one that is located at, let's see, forty-one point five W Highway forty-eight North. There was the property of thirty fifteen Vammer Highway, James Barnes property. That was the one that we had sent a letter to, it had been served or issued by mail. And that owner, there was an issue as to whether someone was living in a camper or not. And that I know of, I think that person contacted the office, said no one was living there. If there's an update, you all wanted to not take any action and to review it this month. So if there's some change of which we're aware, okay, is there any action that the board wants to take? Okay. If not, then we'll leave that as is and just continue to review it. And then the property of seventy oh one Heshua Road by owner Tara Proctor, there's an issue where there was concern as to whether that property had a permit, apparently had been issued a permit back in February of twenty twenty. And I think we're going to follow up with city. As to whether or not, or excuse me, follow up as to whether or not any action, particularly the permit, to continue with it. As far as utilizing it for building purposes, I don't know if there's an update.
The property was pulled in twenty twenty, so it's been two years. It doesn't look like they're following through with, you know, after six months, your permit is void. It doesn't look like they're following through with those regulations.
So I think if that-
But we haven't made contact with them.
Okay. Do you see what they want to do, a point way in there?
Nobody has an address for them. The address they gave to the county was incorrect.
Mr. Mayor, my suggestion on that is let me follow up on that, let me report back in January status, whether we need to take any action or not, if you want action to take.
Okay.
But that's those are the property issues that we had taken up in previous months. If there are others which you all are aware, let me know. Take action on those and be somewhere that, if that's it, some others that need to be brought up.
I don't have anything. Does anyone know, have anything?
That's my report.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is something that I brought up last meeting, considering or concerning the community center slash civic center. This was something that the previous council and mayor got the ball rolling on. And I believe Jeff Corley was here to present the final drawings or the plans of that facility. If you would-
They're near finished.
Near finished? Okay.
You'll be, I just brought one set.
We should pass them down.
Just may I make the record, could you all put that off till last?
Till last?
Till last, and that way we could-
That will be fine. That will be fine.
Well, I'll just sit around that table there and look at them.
All right. The next thing we have on the agenda is the GNRC USDA Community Facilities Grant slash Loan Program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Michael Mills. I am the new Director of Economic and Community Development at the International Regional Council. My background is a little bit, just for your own notification purposes, I came to GNRC from the US Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration. So I've got about five, six years or so in grants and whatnot too. So one of my, you know, objectives here is to help you guys, like, get ready to move along with this. So I've identified two potential sources of funding here. So I'm going to share this with members of the council. And if anyone else would like a copy of this, it's just an information sheet here. So, you know, for your own purposes, if you're familiar and want to learn a little bit more about USDA or the Community Development Block Grant Program, I'd be happy to email or share that with you all as well. So if you go with that. So as I understand it and talking to Amanda, the interest in this, we were talking right before the meeting here too. And I understand, I think, that the community's desire is to shift more towards a civic center, maybe instead of an actual community center here. So if you'll notice, I do want to imply this particular item here for your own purposes. I've included about twelve discussion questions at the end of your packet that, you know, as a staff, as an organization, once we get ready to go down the line here, we're going to want to have, you know, more comprehensive discussions with the body, the community as well, so we can get some of the specifics that we're wanting to know, so we can get this grant application actually moving here. But I want to start, I think, with USDA process here, of course, USDA Community Facilities Grant. You have to be in a rural area. There's no, you know, problem or anything like that with the population of the city of Charlotte, which is about sixteen hundred or so. So there is no issue with eligibility as far as USDA Community Facilities Grant goes. And I'm not going to, you know, take up too much time and read all this. This is just a fun nighttime reading for everybody. But of course, we get phone calls and emails and things like that all the time. So I'd be happy to come back and spend some time with the council as a whole. You, Mr. Mayor, whoever, you know, may be interested in learning more about this particular program, we can talk about some of the things that the, you know, city of Charlotte may be interested in in terms of determining some priorities that may be funded with some of the USDA funds. But I did want to point out here that a community facility like this, this is absolutely a match for the USDA funding. One of the good things about this as well is the USDA application window is rolling. There is no deadline. So we don't have to worry about that. We can get started on that as soon as possible. And as soon as you guys give me the directive to do so, we can start working on that as a staff. Couple of things to note here. Let's see here. Some of the examples of, you know, essential community facilities. I mean, we have a variety of things, but a lot of these USDA funds are used for healthcare facilities, other public facilities such as town halls, courthouses, airport hangars, street improvements, community support services such as childcare centers, community centers, fairgrounds, transitional housing, local food systems such as community gardens, food pantries, community kitchens, food banks, food hubs, greenhouses. You get the idea. That's the flexibility that is actually embedded within the USDA Community Facilities Grant. We did a little bit of looking at this too, based on some of the financials that may come forward. It appears that for a USDA grant, it looks like that we'd be eligible for seventy-five percent funding with a twenty-five percent local match. I will go back and double check those numbers, but if we're looking at this as an example of, say you have a million dollar cost estimate for your community facility, the applicant in this circumstance, the city of Charlotte, would be on the hook for twenty-five percent or two hundred and fifty thousand. The USDA would provide seven hundred and fifty thousand or the remaining seventy-five percent of that. But, you know, this is, like I said, just some general, like, you know, reading material here. Like, you know, I've got some experience with USDA grants. I've got a staff of two grant writers underneath me as well. So we would be happy to answer any questions if you all have any. You know, just like I said, my number, I'll give you my business card as well. My number and my email is on there. But one other thing too, I do want to mention as well, is that we, once I learned about this particular project about a week, two weeks or so ago, we started looking at other sources of funding should USDA, you know, not actually be available. The other program, these are state funds that come from the US Housing and Urban Development Department in the form of CDVG, which is called the Community Development Block Grant Program. One of the interesting things about the CDVG program, this run out of TNECD in Nashville, is these particular grants are supposed to be targeted at communities with more than fifty-one percent low to moderate income folks. So we did some assessments as well too. And the city of Charlotte has a sixty-three percent low to moderate income. So this actually opens the door for another grant opportunity. That one is capped at four hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, you know, four hundred thousand, I don't know necessarily, based on the size of the facility, what we'd be looking at as a cost estimate. But I do know the matching requirement for the city of Charlotte, were we to use the CDVG funds, would be a twenty-seven percent match rate and seventy-three percent would come from the CDVG grant. But I, you just wanted to make sure that we had some options as we get ready to get started. So if anyone has any additional questions, like I said, I've got my business cards on me, Mr. Mayor, council, so please don't hesitate to reach out to us. And just let us know once we get started. Maybe we want to have a kickoff meeting and do some information sharing or something like that, so we get more of a directive, so we can actually get a direction down on paper and get ready to move forward. The other pertinent information, I think, on the CDVG grant is that deadline is March third, twenty twenty-three. There is no deadline for USDA. We can start that anytime. The CDVG grant, if we have to go that route, that deadline is March third, twenty twenty-three.
Members of the council, one of the reasons that Jennifer and I looked into this was because of the consideration of actually building this community slash civic center. So that's, you know, one way that we would look in trying to fund it or to help fund it. I think last week, or last week, last month, I asked you guys, and Mike brings up a good, a good point, or this brings up a good point of reaching out to the community, the people that we represent, and just ask them their feelings about something like this. Is it worth, you know, applying for this grant, spending the money, you know? And of course, as you'll see through the plans, you know, you can get an idea of the size of the facility, the, you know, and the purpose is to, we have this building here that's available for rental. But as you can see, the capacity is not very, very big. And if we were to build something somewhat bigger, then you're looking at, was it a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy people capacity? Yeah. So I mean, you know, you have, you would have that available. So there again, like I said, that's just something that I want, I wanted us all to take into consideration when I even brought the subject up. Because like I said, the previous council and mayor had already got this kind of ball rolling. And I just wanted to see if we want to keep it going and pursue it. And this is something that we might want to do. So.
When you say keep it going, just keep exploring the options for the centers, that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think certainly, keep it going and discuss it.
Okay. So.
You just pick one or the other grant? Are you allowed to do both? How does that work?
Yeah, you could actually apply concurrently for both. So, you know, it increases your, you know, odds of receiving some sort of a funding, I think, too. So as an agency, we have the capacity to work on two grants at the same time if we need to. But the only stipulation is you can only have one open CDVG and one open USDA grant at the same time. But you can apply to both of those at the same time.
And it can be for the same project?
It can be the same project. So, you know, were, you know, if you were fortunate enough, I think, to get both, then you would look at the opportunity of maybe either turning one back or, you know, after you get approved for some of these, it's not outside the realm of possibility that you could apply for a change of scope. Meaning that, you know, if you get a million dollar USDA grant and you think it's a, you know, one point three million dollar project, and you wind up getting both, you could say, okay, we need this, you know, the CDVG grant, instead of building the facility itself, maybe infrastructure to tie into existing basic public infrastructure around the site, parking lot, landscaping, et cetera, that type of thing. So there's a couple of opportunities that we've looked at to stack the capital, basically, on top of each other, to make this, you know, a state of the art, nice facility. So we can play with that, were we to be fortunate enough, I think, to get both grants. But I'd be happy to talk about, you know, that a little bit more as well too. So if you guys have any questions, definitely. I can't emphasize enough, let me know, because I definitely want to work with you guys on this.
My thing was, it may be jumping way ahead, but to keeping the cost of it down for people to rent it.
Right.
It's people around here who aren't going to spend.
Right.
You know, and you got to keep it rented, it pays toll.
Right. Well, I mean, I realize that, I mean, like, basically, I mean, this, this building is probably never or rarely rented for family reunions, especially if it was my family. Because you couldn't get a third of them in here. But, you know, for something like that, it would be different. I think this place is mainly for baby showers, bridal showers, you know, small events such as that. And, and, you know, I, we get, we get feedback for what we charge for that, you know, which is, everybody seems to think it's too high. So I understand where you're coming from. And that's a concern of mine, is if we spend a million, million-two, building a building, which I realize giving grant money and all that, but still, we have to come up with twenty-five percent of that. You know, my concern is, are we going to rent it out enough to just cover the cost? Because I figure if the building size hasn't changed, from what I had previously seen, being a retired employee of Dixon Electric Utility, I know what the electricity bills are going to run in the wintertime there if it's all electric or if it's in the summertime and it's all electric. And it's going to be expensive. And that's just one expense. So, I mean, that's just something I want everybody to think about, you know, and it is, it is a concern of mine. But I still would like for us to continue, you know, pursuing to see if that's, if that's something that's good for the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, you know, I would like to add this as well too, that, you know, as we, you know, side around internally, you know, obviously, we don't know what the vision is for the community. But, you know, there's opportunities, I think, for a multi-purpose facility as well.
Yeah.
You know, if you're looking at, I believe, Launch Tennessee, maybe even has grant money available, should you be interested in developing a multi-purpose facility that also has coworking space for folks who work remotely, you know, out here.
Right.
There's an opportunity to incorporate space for, you know, if there's a local food bank or if there's an EMA office or something like that. I've seen this, like, across the landscape from both Alabama and Oregon, where, you know, if you have a very narrow focus on a building, that's fine if it meets your purpose. But as a vision, as a community, if there's numerous opportunities where you can co-locate several different entities in a building, that gives us much more of a narrative that we can capture to argue and really, you know, put, you know, everything we have behind it to make it a more competitive grant application. So, you know, I would say definitely, you know, there's an opportunity here for several discussions to see what some of the other community needs might be, how this facility can be kind of a, you know, for all I know, it could be like a command center, a first response center. It could have cold storage refrigeration. It could have classrooms. It could have, you name it. I mean, the, the potential is there for a state of the art facility that really serves many purposes. And I think, obviously, that's, you know, increasing the cost of the facility as well too. But the more people and the more individual and niche groups that this facility can actually serve, then we're looking at more, you know, more people, more organizations serve as well. So that's one of the ways to kind of look at a more competitive application that we can actually get into. And one of the other questions I think I may have, just, I'll just go ahead and raise it too, because I know we've got some design inspects over here. Is there a property already identified where this would go?
Yes.
So it's already owned?
It's already owned by the city, yes.
Awesome. Okay. So I was going to mention that both grants also allow for the acquisition of property as part of it too, if that needed to be a component of the project as well. But if you already have the land in hands, that's fantastic.
Thank you. And that's, which, like, you just brought it up and made me think of it, which one of the things that I thought about is using it for educational. You know, I guess if there was a subject in school that I was good at, it was history. And really, that's the only thing that interested me was history. And you're sitting in a building that was built prior to eighteen thirty. A lot of people, a lot of people, even people that live here, don't know the history of this city or this town. And it's that building that I would like to use to educate people just a little bit about the seventeenth oldest city in the state of Tennessee. We are one of the oldest cities in the country, when you think about it. So there's, there's a lot, you know, than just having family reunions or wedding showers or baby showers, you know. There's, there's a lot of things that we can use it for.
What about storm rating? Is it storm rated? Tornado shelter?
Probably not.
I didn't know if there was any storm rating to it, that it could be used for that too, because I've seen that asked a lot, if there was a community shelter or whatever.
Yeah. He's shaking his head.
It's not now.
It could be made that, which would make the price go.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It also comes to mind along the lines of education. We have a lot of kids in our area, when virtual school's going on, don't have access to internet. And I mean, if it's somewhere we could provide internet for these kids to come to, I would think that would be helpful.
Something else to think about.
With the bigger room, I mean, if it can hold a hundred and fifty people, obviously, more than this room, we may get a little bit more foot traffic as well, as far as how many people would want to rent it out, what you're speaking on.
Yeah.
So, more than here, I would say.
Yeah.
My family's same way. We wouldn't often rent here.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, that's something that, that I've heard from people that I've talked to about it, is that they think that, they think that you would get more use out of it because you're offering them a bigger facility to handle more people. So I guess we just continue to move, move forward with it?
I mean, the one grant was March? Was that the deadline?
Deadline. Yes, sir.
Let's just talk about cost. We're showing right now a fifty-two hundred square foot building. Right now, prices are running, I think it's going to scare you, they're going to run at close to three hundred dollars a square foot. We bid a office building in Spring, it was bid in about a month ago. It came in at three sixty-five square foot. So the grant sounds, sounds good.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, Mayor Davis was thinking it was going to be eight hundred, eight hundred thousand, a million and two. I think it'll be a million five.
Yeah. Well, I think he was, yeah, and I think he was basing it off a local contractor.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Mayor, I'll also, like, interject as well with this. Just, so you guys are familiar how GNRC operates. Basically, we would take our cues from you all in terms of what you want this facility to contain. You don't have to do the grant writing. We do that stuff for you. We charge an admin fee. That's something that we can get into. But the good thing is the administration fee can be paid for on the grant. So, you know, the city does not have to come out, you know, pocket or anything like that. So I don't want any staff members or any members of the council to look at it from the standpoint of, oh, you know, for the next, like, six months, you got to spend four hours every Tuesday night after a council meeting or something like that, working on this. That's what we do. We bring that expertise. We've got a staff of grant writers. We can administer all this stuff. We can track down the forms that you need and probably wind up doing a lot of legwork out here in the community to get letters of support from different, you know, organizations and members of the community as well. So I think from this particular point, I love your suggestion that we'll just keep it on the forefront. And, you know, if you get an opportunity to engage your constituents or, you know, maybe just get some additional information about what people would want to see in this type of facility to justify what the city would have to come up with as the matching component, you know, we'll be happy to do all that stuff. I just don't want you all to look like, you know, that you feel like that you need to go and do all this work yourselves. That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Am I making a motion to move forward with it?
Got a motion to move forward with it? Caleb, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Noes? All right. That's what we'll do. And that brings us to the last part of the old business. Is the tap grant, which is the, um, the state project on Highway forty-eight from the three-way stop to the red light up there in Charlotte. I think everyone, everyone has been informed that, that we have, if we stop the project, the city has already paid twenty-nine thousand dollars on this project. And if we stop the project, it's going to cost the city another two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So last week, I think you were asked to, to take into consideration everything that was brought up by concerned citizens and then as city council and yourselves as to whether we want to stop the project and pay the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars? And, or do we want to proceed with the project?
What's the cost of proceeding?
What's that?
What's the cost to proceed?
It's a total of four hundred and five thousand dollars.
Four hundred and five thousand, which?
Minus the twenty-nine out of that.
Which, how much had the city put back on retail?
Three hundred and seventy right now. We have three hundred and seventy put back right now, and we had budgeted to split the rest of it this year and next year, because construction is to start in September twenty twenty-three.
Is there an option to change the scope or change the plan?
Lisa did not come tonight, because she said she tried to look for other options on this and could not get anywhere with it. So she's waiting to hear which way the vote goes.
May I ask anything? I have a question. We were told there would be more, other options.
You, you were told that they would look to see if there could be more options?
Yeah. We got a phone call saying that there would probably be more options.
Yeah. Because Lisa had called me and said she was going to research more options. And she called today and said she was not able to get any other options. It was either vote to do it or not to do it.
Anyone else?
So they decided to dip between, so they looked at their options and they said there are no other options?
Yes.
Correct.
That is correct.
Why is that? Can she explain? When was it approved to be put on forty-eight?
The grant was awarded in two thousand twenty.
Moved from on the square, that, that stage of it?
Mm-hmm.
And then when that was denied or wasn't feasible, then it was, it was moved to forty-eight years?
It wasn't denied. Whenever we submitted the information to TDOT, it was denied, well, it was denied by multimodal grant. And then they repurposed it into a tap grant. Because we were denied the multimodal grant and repurposed into a tap grant and transportation, transportation alternatives program. And they moved it from the square, from, to connect with the current sidewalk, pump free- And they moved it from the square, from, to connect with the current sidewalk at Pump Free Street, go across Academy Street, forty-eight, down to the New Justice Center because Sherry and the other council members had let them know that that was an up and coming building for Charlotte and wanted to have connectivity for that.
And that was in twenty-twenty?
Prior to twenty-twenty, when, yeah, we were awarded in twenty-twenty. We, we started applying for this grant in two thousand sixteen. Yeah, so it was just a process of.
But twenty-twenty is when it was.
Awarded.
You knew it was going on Highway forty-eight?
No, we knew we were awarded. We knew it was going on Highway forty-eight. Probably a few months after they awarded it cuz we had to ask for a design cuz they did not give us a design when they awarded it. They just awarded us the three million dollars for the grant. And then it was a few months after that, they gave us a little drawing of just.
Well, a lot of frustration is why it wasn't brought up in the community like what he was talking about, like this community center or whatever. You know, talking to the citizens, talking to the people that it is concerning, like us and everybody else here, you know, putting a little bitty message in the paper. And then, you know, when it affects more than just, you know, the looks of Charlotte, you know, affects our, our businesses, affects our property, along with everybody else here. And, you know, it, it is, it's kinda frustrating that none of that was brought attention to the people that it affected. It was just kinda slid in there nice and quick and easy and.
There was an announcement in the Dixon Herald, and there was also an announcement on the Facebook, um, public announcements of the award.
Yeah, but it would think that projects that affect more people like that, that directly, it would be, like he was talking about, you, you go into the community and you talk to the citizens and you talk to the businesses that are affected by it and say, hey, this is what we're doing, and this is how it's gonna affect you. You know, what do you think? You know, half of them little letters don't, if you, if you read them at all, or, you know, they're, they're worded in this way, you don't know what's going on, you don't know the details of it. And I, I, this is what's kinda frustrating is that it's kinda.
We were always just led to believe it was the square. And I get it that you were trying for the square and it didn't make it to the square. But, I mean, I'm in a hundred percent agreement that, you know, there were a small number of properties that are being affected, you know, versus a big, you know, that a little letter could've been sent to us just like the state sent us a letter, and that's how we find out about it, when they're putting stakes up on our property. You know, and it's a done deal, and you've blown two-hundred-and-eighty-plus thousand dollars and now are, and, you know, a firing squad, basically, but, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's, that's just, uh, you know, and then we get word today that, I mean, basically, we're losing our parking lot. And we're gonna be just like the dollar store, and all of y'all have been there when they're trying to get that dagum eighteen-wheeler from the BP of Crocs backing it in, and how many wrecks have happened and blowups that you're, you know, we're gonna follow that on a daily basis, you guys. That will be a daily basis of us blocking forty-eight to back a, a truck up. So, that's where that's gonna be, right at him. And sometimes Sweet Charlotte is they have an eighteen-wheeler that needs to unload, and I, I don't know, sometimes they back it up into the cemetery, and sometimes they, you know, they're at the corner of a lot. That's just something to think about, too.
And I don't have property, business property like they do, but I hope you all have taken into consideration probably the taxes that this businesses have actually led into the city, you know, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand that you still might have to pay, write it off as a lesson learned.
If we do that, and I'll say this, if we do that, then there'll be a lot of other projects the city won't be able to do. If we just throw that money away, which is basically what we're doing.
How's that?
Huh?
Cuz it's gonna be money spent anyway.
Well, there's money put back for it. But I mean, it'd be just like taking two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars out in the, out of the bank, carrying it out here and setting it on fire. And then, you know, how's that gonna look on the new council and, and myself as the new mayor? I mean, I, I realize that this should've been settled prior, before any of us took office.
It was, in August of twenty-twenty-two, the resolution was signed, so you all stepped into it.
That was the pre- that was the previous council, they did not take over until September first, yeah.
In August of twenty-twenty-two, it was signed, and y'all got to step into it.
Yeah. But anyway, we're gonna move forward and go ahead and take a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say that, just for the record, I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed that T-Dot didn't come here, number one. Number two, I'm kinda disappointed that they didn't even offer some alternate solutions. When I left last month from our meeting, I felt like that's kinda what was discussed. I mean, they didn't even show up.
Yeah.
That's, that's disappointing to say the least.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the grant lady didn't even show up. She at least explained to us face-to-face about why there was not other options. You know, it's just kinda highly disappointing.
I mean, what will happen is if it's denied, the sidewalk, we'll pay two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars and they'll take the three million dollars allotted to us and award it to other cities.
But she said you'd be getting, no doubt that you all could apply for another grant and you would be awarded. I mean, she sat right there and said that, all of you heard her, no problem.
I was just wondering, like, okay, everything, like, I don't know how to say, okay, like, if you could make it work out a little bit for everybody, say the sidewalk thing, if it was lowered so that vehicles could come in.
They won't do that.
They talked to us today.
I talked to T-Dot today.
They're not willing to help us.
They're gonna give us a fifty-foot entrance.
How, how much room do y'all need to?
The whole thing.
How, how long is that? I mean, how, how much extra are you?
Probably about about a hundred and fifty feet.
But they're also taking that upper lot that we use as well and, and cutting that whole front to the corner of our building forward.
Probably taking part of that rock wall as well.
Is, is gonna be gone.
Just making it a big ditch.
And so then we have the width of the building left, essentially.
But I know it's like throwing away that money, but you're also spending money, you're spending four-hundred thousand for something nobody wants.
I wouldn't say nobody don't want it, I've talked to several that, that want it. I've got a family that has a, a kid in high, the middle school that walks to school every morning. I've seen him, they want it, just to get their kid off the side of the highway. Well, he, he's there, he's there about usually seven fifteen, seven twenty, we've got pictures.
And they walk on forty-eight?
Yes.
Leah sees me too. Forty-eight, or forty-nine, yes.
So we're gonna do a four-hundred thousand dollar sidewalk for one kid?
No.
No?
We'll see.
No?
We'll see how many people use it, how many people's gonna get hurt.
And that brings up city liability too, gets in your resolution.
And skateboarders who fly down that hill? I understand you, it's not gonna be a good situation.
I'm motioning to your fault.
They'll either motion to approve the grant or deny it.
Now, is this any tied any way into that, to the red light?
That's coming either way.
There's no way to stop the red light?
I have a question too, cuz they had talked too about the drainage problems in Charlotte. If we, if the sidewalk is killed, are they still gonna fix the drainage problems? Are we still gonna have that problem, are they gonna dig?
That's something we'll have to reapply for them to come back and look at.
Cuz I don't wanna, if we deny it, then they come back and dig it up anyway.
No, 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 that's something we would have to reapply. Well, I mean, it's in T-Dot right away, so honestly, if they decided to, they could.
I mean, I was gonna say, they already own, they already have twenty-five foot of the center line, is there a right of way anyway to do what, what they want to with it?
Well, why did that lady, the red light is set dead, why did that lady ask if y'all wanted to move forward with the red light? Last meeting, that was her exact words, y'all wanna move forward with the red light?
I don't remember her asking that, I know that.
I do.
She asked, said something about we'd have to reapply.
Probably why she's not here. We're just getting a little fed up with stuff being thrown at us that we don't, are not being let in off the full truth and being notified about stuff.
Yeah. Same goes with us being thrown into this.
I understand.
No, we're, we're not trying to, I mean, it's just, it is hard on everybody, but no, we're not, we're, this is our livelihood is why we're so passionate.
And it's gonna, eventually, if you proceed with all the projects, it's gonna be your livelihood, it's gonna be all these livelihoods up forty-eight, all the way to the long field, if you proceed with what they originally wanted.
Yeah. So do I have a motion, uh, to either proceed or decline?
I mean, can we do like a motion to postpone until the other people come to talk? I feel like they're not here, like everybody's saying to discuss anything, I don't know.
I don't know what else they could, could come to discuss. I mean, they're, like I said, they was gonna check to see if there were other options.
Yeah, and they're checking, there's not.
And there's not, so.
She was optimistic.
I'll just say, I've met with Freddie, and like I said, it's gonna be hard for me to vote, vote it down for the city to throw away, and, you know, you understand what I'm saying? You know, I'm, I'm a businessman, I'm just, we got thrown into this, and I don't agree with it either, you know, for your business sake, but it's gonna be hard for me to.
Well, I just wish in the future, stuff that is done, like these projects, like the community centers, that y'all get more of the, uh, community involved in it, besides the little, little letter that nobody reads.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I think that would go a long ways for everybody in the community.
And I can't speak for everybody, that's certainly be a goal of mine.
Yeah.
I would be for just the drainage though, and I'm sure. I'm sure y'all, we get flooded after too, so, and it's bad, and I know they get it bad.
Yeah.
It's four times since I've owned it.
That, that's the worst.
Unless they do a better job than they did in front of my property, it would be worse. Because my property, as I said, I've had to pay to have its concrete put there to keep from washing into the house, and there is a drain probably this big. And if that's all the drainage they're proposing, then you're gonna be looking at a worse settlement than what you already have.
Does anybody know who the grant lady that you referenced?
Lisa Dunn.
Lisa Dunn? Every department at GNRC has some sort of relationship with T-Dot in some way, shape, or form. So, I didn't know if, if council was wanting to table this to get more clarification from T-Dot or something like that, I mean, that might be an option. But we all have our, you know, contacts at, at T-Dot, and I'd be happy to try to reach out if I can to let them know that Charlotte really would like somebody to come back to a council meeting and answer some questions.
She stated that she was not coming tonight, and they were waiting the results of the vote when I spoke to her this afternoon.
Jennifer, so the scope of this also includes some kind of drainage?
They're replacing the storm drain from eighteen to twenty-four in a new culver area, upright.
And the culver on my side?
No.
It's catching the.
I don't know, I mean, that highway just pours water into Sweet Charlotte. Any drainage that happens, it better drainage on that side, it definitely helps Sweet Charlotte because it's just like a river when it flows down off that highway.
They said it would catch the water runoff from higher up better and prevent it from crossing more, but it would not stop everything, there were still some issues on the other side of the road.
I mean, if you guys ever know, if you've ever been there on a major flood, I mean, it, it really is a river coming in our. My wife and I, the first week, week before we opened it up, I had to open up the back door and let the river go through the store because the culver and the highway was just coming down through the building.
It would help that situation, but it would not completely get rid of it.
Culver also overflows on our side, so.
And we pointed that out to them at the last meeting.
I don't like. You said something about the lady from the state coming back, she's waiting on the vote?
She just said she's, they wanted to hear the vote. She said she had no other options for us, they wanted to know what the vote was.
I know, but if you say no, she's not coming back, you say yes, she's not coming back.
That, she has no plans to come back.
I'm making a motion to vote on.
Vote on?
Proven or disapproved on the sidewalk?
I have a second. Has motion been made to approve or dis- or to stop the, either to go forward or to stop with the project? You wanna have a second?
You'll have to.
Mr. Mayor, you need to clarify the motion.
You'll have to motion either proceed or stop.
I'm making a motion to proceed with the vote.
To proceed with the vote, either to accept or
Deny.
Stop the project.
I mean, that's, I don't think that's a proper motion in as much as that it doesn't take action. Nobody has, I think you need a formal motion to either proceed with the project or to not proceed with the project.
And then we'll do roll call, and you can vote individually, which yes or no, to proceed or to stop.
Unless you're calling for the question, that, that's a proper motion, if you call for the question of the vote. That's what you're asking for. That, that's why I was asking, Mr. Clary, Clary, that's what your motion is.
I'm not understanding.
She's wanting you to call for a, a motion, to ask for a motion.
No, I asked for a motion.
And your motion is for what?
To move forward with the vote, to approve or deny the sidewalk.
Okay, so you're just, you're calling for the question and you want to, to vote or ask for the, the council to move forward with the vote?
Yes, sir.
You're calling for the question, you're not making a formal motion to approve or to deny?
No.
Mr. Mayor, that's a proper motion, it's, it's basically calling for the question. Calling for the question means, okay, in debate, proceed with the vote with a, with a, with a proper motion. So that needs a second.
So we're just, we're just, in other words, we're just voting to? We're voting to vote, to proceed with a vote.
To, right, to.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
To end discussion and proceed with either a vote of or a.
Okay.
Yes.
But he needs a second.
I've got one question, though. I know there's a question, I mean, I'm linked with Freddie and Fennati, Rodney. I feel like I've got a conflict.
Well, technically, you don't, according to the law, but I guess you do have the right to sus- to sustain?
That's your, that's, that's individual members, you can disclose if you feel like there's a conflict, that's up to each individual.
I'm monetarily paying from.
MTA has stated that as long as Freddie is not, or Rodney is not a owner, he's just an employee, you can, you can vote. You don't have a stake in the company, he's just an employee paycheck. We clear that for Melinda so she could know.
Yeah.
If you're good with that.
Cuz I don't want anybody to say, oh, you did this.
You've disposed of it by this public, public speaker.
If he owned the company, then. If he owned the company, then no, you could not vote, but as an employee of the company, you can vote.
Mr. Mayor, you still need a second.
Still need a second.
Second for the call for question? One second.
Any other discussion?
Just voting on whether we should go forward with the vote.
With the vote.
In discussion, yes.
All right, so, we were, we were taught, Caleb, you, you made the motion, so how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Ricky?
No.
No, okay.
Melinda?
No.
Leah?
I'll say no.
Josh?
I'd say yes.
Chris?
No.
So no, we're not going to move forward?
Not gonna vote on it.
Not gonna vote on it.
Motion fails.
If we don't vote on it, it's just to go forward, right?
Uh huh.
You called for the question for a vote, you decided, you have decided not to move forward with a vote on it, so you can, you can either. Continue to discuss it, Mr. Mayor, or, uh, we can make a motion to, to defer it. If there's no motion on the action in itself, it fails, so.
So we need to make a?
I'll make a motion to not go through with it, that way we get a vote.
Motion's been made not to proceed with the project. Is that right, Ricky?
Yes.
All right, you have a second?
I'll say it.
Caleb?
Yes.
You vote to proceed or not proceed?
Yes, proceed.
And you vote no?
No, I'm sorry, I understand the question.
Let's, let's clarify the motion. Mr. Pastor, just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, may, your motion is to not proceed with the project. So a no vote is, is against that, so if somebody that's wanting to move forward with the project would vote yes.
Oh.
Yes.
So someone that's wanting, excuse me, I apologize. I get it backwards, sorry. Motion is to proceed with the project, so if you don't want to proceed with the project, you will vote yes.
If you want her to say you vote.
You want to proceed, you vote no.
You want to proceed, you vote no.
Yeah.
The motion is to not proceed.
Correct.
The motion is to not proceed with the project, okay? So if you do not want to proceed with the project, you will vote yes to this motion.
No.
Ricky went yes, he went no.
Who's second, Turtle?
Yes.
Yes, Turtle though.
You vote yes?
I voted yes.
No, I was gonna say, Turtle should have been the second one to vote.
Well, I was just going down the line.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, let Turtle have it.
Can you go first?
No.
I was just going down the line.
We're new at this, guys.
Yeah.
So, Melinda?
Oh, wait, what did Turtle?
Well, I was waiting, I didn't know if Turtle was going to.
I was calling the roll down the line, so it's just easier for me to keep minutes that way.
Okay.
So Melinda would be.
Is anyone on you?
Yes.
Okay.
Caleb says.
Caleb said no.
No. Ricky says yes.
I say yes to not move forward.
I'm gonna say yes.
Leah? And Josh?
No.
Okay. I guess we notify them and, and tell them that we'll stop, tell them to stop the project. All right, you want to, you on, your turn now, Jeff, with the plans?
Yes. Okay, like I said, we're about to draw now, fifty-two hundred square feet, and I'm sure I should have, about to know where we're on.
This, you on my, maybe I'm just coming around, coming around up here so you can see it.
She brought something on the poster a little. We'll start with the site. Right now, this is all pavement, all the way over to the Mexican restaurant. We're, we're funding people in driveways to keep them from just coming out everywhere. And it's still not perfect, because it's still too close to intersection, but there's nothing we can do about it. We've got this amount of parking up here, the counties agreed with the city, that you can use this entire parking lot back here. That's pretty much the site. We're gonna have, we're going to have a detention pond right here, that picks up the runoff off of the parking lot and the building. Detain it, keep from flooding the neighborhood down below. That goes into.
Before that road, before that road then runs down there?
Yeah. And, and regarding the raw's drainage now, we found a pipe right here that comes off this state catch base out there, that was broke. Totally stopped. So that, that's not collecting anything. We're fixing that, it's in the project, so, but that's one reason there's so much. And there's where we're spilling the gap down down the ditch line. Now, the building. That's your building. Here's the large meeting room, community room, and we've got a smaller one over here, in case you had a smaller venue, you could use this one, a larger one, you can use this. Uh, and it was some talk, some talk about this could possibly even be your city hall.
Yeah.
It's someday.
Now, the highway forty-nine is up here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, if they, if you needed any, uh, guidance on that, highway forty-nine is up there. This, this is actually the front of the building.
This is the front of the building, that's the parking lot back there. How big is this building, or this, square footed? This one, the total, around a hundred, close to a hundred fifty. The entire capacity of the, uh, the building is, uh, three hundred and forty-five, but of course, you're, you're, you're using that for needing. Got the restrooms, the kitchen. Two little offices. This could be, in the future, be your city hall. I was gonna ask that, is there, if y'all talk about.
What's that?
Moving city hall there, is there any unit fit there?
Uh, I haven't planned on it. Don't show, y'all need to, if you're gonna talk, discuss, y'all need to go outside.
Oh.
Oh.
What are you, sorry.
Well, the, the only reason, the only thing that I would even consider doing is, eventually, I'd like to have the city hall now inspected. I mean, the, the structure of the building, to see how sound it is, and I know that it's, it needs some, some good tender loving care, because we got some floor joists that are just floating.
Sure.
That's not even holding the, you know, so, under that circumstance, maybe move it down there. Uh, but, I mean, I would prefer not to move it out of the historic building.
Sure.
But, I mean, we could, but, I mean, then, but we could have meetings, or council meetings, and things like that.
If you had an overflow meeting like tonight.
Yeah.
Or something, you could have that, where you could go to.
Yeah.
Yes. But anyway, this kitchen, you can, it's, you're not cooking in this kitchen, but they can bring their food in, and you'll have warmers in there to warm it.
And also keep in mind that, I guess there's always been an agreement with the Lions Club, that they meet in that building, so they would be able to continue to meet there.
Yeah, they can meet here. And it's not a functional kitchen, or what I heard. You don't need to cook in it. That's, that's the design. Oh, get on, bring it in.
They designed it with warmers.
Yeah. Warmers, not, not food.
Yeah. Technically, you're probably not supposed to be cooking in the Lions Club building now.
We've got a, a four eye, with an ancil system over it. But that's just a regular, like a drop-in or a slide-in oven, cooktop. But as far as being a commercial kitchen, it's not. You just, you get it, you get it.
No grease trap needed, no, that's, that's very.
Yeah, yeah. You get, you go to commercial, you go, very expensive. Restrooms, lay-in ceiling throughout, you know, acoustical ceiling. Of course, there's the roof blend. It's gonna be a shingle roof, can fit in with the other buildings in that area, other than the justice center. You'll be reviewing, I guess? The only thing that we don't have finished is the structural. We got the civil last week, and, and the structural guy wouldn't start till he saw the civil to know what kind of block elevations and all he's gonna have. Uh, mechanical system will be gas heats, electric air. Would do a little bit of S P Q all probably. Plumbing drones. We'll just show you the electric there. What you'll have is, um, on the electric end of it, of course, we're doing the power, the plugs and the lights. You all, ultimately, will have to have someone come in and wire it for your data and telephone. But we've got the conduits in the via, in the boxes, you'll, you'll be wired.
What size service is it gonna take? Two or four hundred, probably four hundred?
I think it's four hundred.
I have a question, stick right on your mouth.
Yeah, I would rather. Yeah, okay. I'm not a, I'm not an electrical agent, I know just what's the beat angle. Uh, can somebody see that? Four hundred, four hundred.
Need some lighting in here, don't we?
I need, I need my Walmart glasses. I used to not need them, but I do now.
Is it sprinkled?
I know. Was it over five thousand, gotta be sprinkled, eh?
No, it's occupancy.
Is it?
Over three thousand?
Yeah.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, sorry, three hundred, added to zero.
Unless there's alcohol served.
So you're gonna be a bartender?
No, if, if there's alcohol served, it drops it, what's it drop it to, Jay?
A hundred, if you got food, beverage.
Right.
No food there, so.
You're not allowed to eat there?
No, you're not serving food.
Cooking, cooking and all that.
Yeah. You can bring food, set it down, serve it, just can't, like you said, gotcha, gotcha. Uh, the civic center in White Buff has the same setup. You carry food in there, cook, and they got warmers, we put warmers in there.
Yeah.
You know how big the VIB Center is? How big is the VIB Center in there? It's similar, isn't it? Six thousand feet?
No, it's, it's bigger than that.
It's closer to ten, it's ten. They got a historical component there.
Yeah.
And that's the center or something. Yeah. There's a lot of things you all can, can say you're putting in there that might help that grant.
Yeah.
Just the Lions Club being in there.
Well, I know, I know changing it from.
Makes me happy to know that they'll do letters of intent and all the, because I've done all that myself.
If we cover the community center, then, or versus civic center, then we can get a lot more grants by calling it the civic center. And then provide educational and, and stuff like that.
We need to change the name on the drawing, it's civic center and athletic community center. Pretty much the same, but really, it's more of a civic than it is community, community reversed, maybe athletic or.
Yeah, yeah.
More vents like that. Been dealing with the Lions Club. Is that like our building where the Lions Club is, and they could use it, like right now?
Yeah.
It's your all's building that they have a lease.
Yeah, they have a lease.
So they pay us? But that lease may have expired.
They're a non, they're a nonprofit, we don't charge them.
Now, I will say, of course, it, it would be very small, but talking to them, that they would be willing to help out with the non-keeping. You know.
I just, I'm sure you've talked to them, what is their interest with?
Well, I mean, they're.
Highly interested?
They, they're highly interested, or, or, or they're wanting, you know, they're wanting to do something. I mean, that, I'd be scared to lean against the walls of that building.
Yeah.
That concrete block building's been up since.
No kitchen?
Well, the seats.
Doesn't even have a kitchen.
So, uh, but yeah, I mean, they're very interested, and, you know, like I said, with them being nonprofit and, and all that, it's hard for them to, to help that much, but. I mean, they are willing to help a little.
Well, I'll tell you, we've done a lot of restoration centers, none of them pay for theirselves.
No, they don't.
You can't expect, you can't expect that.
No, but I just, you know, I just don't want to go.
I can gush one.
Yeah, we, we just, we just throw two hundred and eighty thousand dollars away.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we just gush them.
Yeah.
No, I mean, we can't be throwing large sums of money away every year and expect the city to.
But, but. You only need to make a decision, if you're going for the grant, we don't need to bid.
Uh, well, that, see, I just brought this up to him last week, last morning, because they, they know, had no idea what was going on. You know, that they didn't think they could.
They told y'all, turn around, bring it.
They don't, they don't. It was in two thousand sixteen. We got awards in two thousand twenty, construction was two thousand twenty-three, we'll all be getting all by the time the next one rolls around.
Well, I suggest, so we did it, we do it, we put it out for the end right after the new year, don't do it during the holiday, because your business, you gotta be in. But if you don't want to be in.
I think we should go ahead and do that.
It won't hurt, exactly. I mean, to go ahead and put it out for bid.
I'll give her an invitation to bid, right after the first few years, because we give that much money. Yeah, to just do that in, that time.
So do it right for you today?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it for you.
And then he can get it going again, you can get it going again.
It's better, we like structure.
Okay, can I get all the council to, uh, have a seat, please? We've, we've had just a little opportunity to, to look into this community civic center, and then the plans, and, and, uh, a little bit of, uh, what we would like to do with it. But what I would like to, now, is to see if I have a motion to bid this, um, community center out, put it out for bid.
I'll make a motion to put it out for bid.
Second? Leah, second. Any, any discussion? And, and just because we're putting it out for bid, doesn't mean that we're gonna build it.
Sure. Is there a cost associated with that? I'm not really exactly sure.
What's that?
To put it out for bid, will they charge a fee to bid it?
You already have a contract with us, just ask it.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only expense you'll have now is the invitation that goes in the paper and. And some credit cost.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question about the bid process as well, if you don't mind. When utilizing federal funds, it's also important that the communities follow the CFR, Dakota Federal Regulations in this circumstance. So I just wanted to see if there was a competitive procurement process, sir, that was actually undertaken to procure your services for the design. If there was not a competitive procurement process, we may need to revisit that, uh, you know, if, if GNRC is contracted to go ahead and move forward with the application, we would probably need to create. A methodology or create a process that showed that you went through a competitive process in order to be able to, to work on the project on the back end as well. So sometimes in this case, we, they're not, then it's not out of the ordinary for us to create that, I'm, I'll tell you that, but I do want to make sure. But I do wanna make sure that the council and, and Mr. Mayor, that you're aware that if we're gonna move forward with this, the design and specs, you know, the construction of the project as well, I wanna make sure that everything is compliant so that you can move forward with your selected provider. And that, just to make sure, you know, going through an RFQ or an RFP process through the paper, going through a competitive bid process, that would be any, uh, potential misgivings or any conflicts of interest relative to the CFR. Because if you are gonna use federal money, it's very important that the CFR be followed to the T in the event there's any kind of an audit. So that's one of the things too that GNRC does, we do procurement advising and things like that. So I have no issue with, you know, wanting to go forward or whatnot, but if you get ready to go through the RFQ process and you wanna run the ad, definitely reach out to us and let us have a conversation and guide you through that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, there, we work with you all for, you, you got things you'd like to put in there.
Absolutely.
And then we can do the design when it gets down to the construction, which is a formality.
Right.
But they're hiring the same company, you do that begin that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor of proceeding with putting it out for bid? Say aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, we'll proceed to do that. That takes care of our old business. Now, we have a couple or three things on the agenda for new business, or actually more than three things I wanted to bring out, but I don't know if I'm going to tonight or not. But, uh, another thing that I asked you guys to think about is, uh, consideration of the old jailer's house. Uh, the city owns that. Uh, it was purchased, I believe, for one dollar from the Historical Society. And I just wanted some of you guys to think about something that we can do with it. Do we need to keep it? Do we need to get rid of it? Do, anyone having thoughts or ideas?
At one time, the county wanted to buy it from us.
True.
Has anybody talked to the county mayor?
That's still an option and, but I've also got two others that have expressed interest.
Is there a possibility of turning it into something like a meat and cheese, a sandwich shop?
I'm, I'm sure if somebody's got enough money. I mean, it's gonna take a whole lot of renovation.
You'll have to do like you did with the other property, market surplus and put it out for bid.
If, if we decide to, yeah.
So someone, you've had a couple people, individuals that've got interest in it?
Mm-hmm. Which, um, one guy, he kinda like, he kinda like I am, he's partial to the square. Don't wanna see the square defaced in any way. Said he would buy it just to keep it looking like it is. Another, like you said, the county has expressed interest to, to renovate and move one of their, uh, offices into it. And even the third party, uh, when he approached me about it, I told him, I said, there's, there's a condition that you cannot deface it. It's got to, you know, you, you can't alter that in any way. Cause I mean, the Historical Society, the society put that in the, the agreement with the city. And I'm gonna put it in the agreement as well, just because I don't want it defaced.
Absolutely.
So.
Does it have water and electric?
Yes.
Whatever down there?
Yeah.
So would have to be like a lot redone inside to do?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of rotting, a lot of termite damage. And, uh.
The historical character would need to remain on the outside, but the inside could be anything, state of the art they want it.
Yeah.
And parkable?
Square.
Square.
But we couldn't, you know, say what's going in there, C one district, so whoever purchased it could do the C one zoning, residential or commercial. And if we continue as is and make a table and move it on, it's currently uninsured and they're not gonna.
Uninsured?
Until we decide on what we're going to do with it. We have no plans for it, so it's currently uninsured.
So if somebody sets fire to it, it's gone?
It's gone.
What's it worth?
I don't have a clue. I, I don't have a clue.
Our insurance appraisal has it around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For, in previous years, you know, it's not been appraised in a couple of years.
I think you're gonna have, if you're gonna consider selling it, I think you'd have to declare it the surplus property.
Yeah, right.
Go through appraisal process, make sense.
Yeah.
Kinda go from there.
And they will not insure it unless we have a plan for it, which is why he asked for thoughts on what to do with it.
I mean, I've never went in there and I'd kinda like to, cause it makes me curious, but I, I mean, the only thing I could think of is like rental space for somebody. I don't know, like for a law office. I mean, offices or I know particular ones pop up, boutiques, I don't know about the square, but you know, something, have their own little whatever.
Yeah. Well, come down someday, I'll give you a tour. I'll give you the fifty cent tour. But I, I will tell you, I will tell you this, there's a set of stairs in there that goes from the first to the second story. It's probably more solid than any house in this town.
I'd like to see the house.
Yeah, but, but anyway, I just, um, I just wanna see us move forward and, and like I said, we, we can't, we're not, we don't have any plans to do anything with it, so it's not insured. And so, uh, I mean, I just, uh, personally, I'm mixed feelings about it, you know? I'd hate to see what somebody would try to turn it into, but, you know, because of its historical significance, but still, on the other hand, somebody, if somebody's interested, you know, in doing something with it, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the obstacle in their way. Because it would certainly, whatever, whatever they do, you know, it, it will benefit two of the three, I'll just tell you that. It'll, it'll benefit the county or the third party in some way, the other, the other person that is interested. But like I said, we, we, we have to declare it as surplus property. And then we would have to, we can't just put it in a real estate hands, we have to put it out for bid or auction.
Can we just do like a group tour maybe before we make a decision on what to do with it?
Sure, sure.
Like, are you wanting us to get this, like, talk to people about it word of mouth and then would y'all post something on the round the square page or no? Friday?
I mean, I don't, I wouldn't see that, that being necessary because, you know, I mean, what Sid, the city has no plans or I don't have any plans or any thoughts. That's kinda why I brought it up to you guys to see if y'all might have some.
Let's, let's see it first.
Okay. Yeah, we can.
But let's let everybody see it.
All right, so we don't need to make no motions for that, so that's what we'll just, we'll just.
But let's, let's try and do it as a group.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, he's, yeah, he still does.
That's okay, do y'all do it as a group.
Well, that is, and I'm glad you're bringing that up, uh, Ms. Mayor of May.
Yeah.
So open meetings, just so you all, just a good, good point of order, I guess, here. Uh, certainly going and looking at site, on-site inspections, allow, chance meetings, those are allowed, incoming, old trucks are allowed, in other words, workforce, there's a number considered formal action meetings. And, um, so those are what are allowed. I think the, the preference is if, if, if there's information that you're seeking, email or call the office, speak to the folks at the, you know, speak to the general. The idea is for you not to, you all to email one another and communicate, that's, that's potentially a, could be a violation to a discussion, potentially. So to eliminate that, there's no reason that there should be a group email other than it's coming out of the central office or out of the mayor's office. Otherwise, just, you know, action directly or by email, and I think that's a lot more, more appropriate. It, it, it's less likely that that type of communication would occur. So just, just a point of interest.
Either that or, uh, you can come down to the office, get a key and walk through it by yourself, look, look.
But directly on that, I mean, that, that's why I had this out to you all, it says specifically there, inspection department, so there's not a problem. You just do not get into a discussion.
Into a discussion.
Right. About, about what you wanna do with it.
Yeah, yeah.
You just look at it.
And when I email the agenda, y'all can reply to me only, not everyone, when I send it in a group email.
Okay, so that's what we will do with the old jailer's house. Um, also, there was a suggestion, uh, the second thing on the new business, uh, for the city to look into purchasing residential trash receptacles or trash cans to provide for each resident who has trash pickup. Um, we did do some research, got some bids, and I think that they have, you have a copy of the bid? That's under the fire, it ain't even gonna be in the fire department.
It's in your fire.
Yeah. So if you will notice, uh, I think on the bid, it was for, was it six hundred and?
Six, six.
Six hundred and fifty trash cans that would cost forty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. I mean, if that's, if that's something that you would continue, continue to be interested in, we can look into it further and we can hold off.
I would just mention that it would look better if it was more uniform. Um, forty-six grand is a lot, man. But it does, it does look better, cause when you drop it, like the city picks them and they have their value.
Well, they, yeah, well, they have to have theirs because of the, the type of trash pickup.
Right, right. Right.
But I guess the way I look at it too is, you know, is, are the people gonna be responsible once the trash is picked up to move them back off the street? Or they gonna leave them out there and then somebody come along and hit them and then we gotta replace it? It's just things like that to think, to think about, uh, but I mean, I agree, I, I'd like to have one myself. I just put mine out on, just laying out there beside the mailbox.
I'd like to be able to buy one for sixty-eight dollars and that, that price it lows.
Yeah.
But with purchasing these, you would have to look at a plan on replacement, what if they break? Who's responsible? What if it's stolen? Who's paying for the replacement?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Who picks up the trash in the city?
Uh, who's it called, Cumberland Disposal?
Okay, so it's not anything to do with the city or the county pickup, like it's just. If I wanted my trash picked up, I'd contract through Cumberland, or is it automatic?
No, if you're in the city limits.
Is it automatic?
It's automatic.
Is it billed?
Yeah, we pay them a monthly, uh, fee to pick up.
Thirty thousand dollars a year.
How much?
Thirty thousand dollars a year plus tipping fees.
We pay?
The city pays, yeah.
So the residenials don't pay?
No.
And now we're looking at buying them receptacles on top of that?
No, that's, no, we're not looking at it, we're just somebody, it was.
Okay, I've just, I wanna make sure I understand what y'all were talking about.
Somebody just suggested or recommended.
Got it.
And I thought I would bring it up.
It's six hundred and fifty, I mean, you're gonna have to hire somebody to manage that, the lid breaks or, I mean, who's gonna manage six hundred and fifty trash? We're gonna have to hire somebody, wouldn't we? Well, we, unless. You got time test?
That's what I'm saying. You would have to figure out who pays for the replacement, if they break the lid, if somebody steals it, what if somebody from Dixon comes and takes it, you know?
I kinda want my house, I'm out of the city.
Well, my son works for Cumberland Disposal and they don't have fancy dump things that dump it over there. So they gotta deep that.
And, yeah. And this is only residential customers, not commercial customers, sorry. Sorry. This is just for your information. If somebody wanted to make a motion to go forward or not go forward, then.
I'll make a motion not to go forward.
I second it.
Okay. Motion's been made not to go forward or proceed with the trash can purchase. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, table that one. Uh, Jennifer, talk about this third thing that we've got, uh, on the agenda as far as new business is the CPA.
So what the CPA is, I'm looking for a coworker, basically. I want a CPA to be co-CMFO with me, to help me with my duties so that when I have overflow and need someone to, say I'm busy doing a grant or something and I need to make the bank accounts reconciled, we can do that. Things like that, whatever we designate, the mayor and I designate for him to do. It's two hundred dollars a month, twenty-four hundred dollars a year to contract with the CPA.
How many hours a month?
One day a month. To do whatever is designated. And I just need a motion to be a co, it's Josh Young, he's from Hendersonville. Yeah, it's not local, he's independent.
But he is a CPA?
He is a CPA and he's independent.
I'll make a motion to make Josh Young the CPA.
Second?
I'll say.
Josh, taking it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Okay, good deal. All right, Dave?
First, just so you know, we're able to do that because it's professional fees, otherwise you're educated.
And he is a CPA licensed.
Will he be coming?
And he has governmental experience.
Right, will he be coming to the meetings?
No.
No.
No, no, what it is, is it's like I need him to reconcile the bank accounts, if I'm busy doing something, he'll come reconcile them for me.
Or if he has to have a problem, he can help me find it.
Yes, if there's a problem, he can help me find it, I don't have to spend all day looking for it, I can designate myself to other duties and he can take care of that for me, being a certified CPA. And he's independent from everybody.
I have one other quick thing, uh, that's not on the agenda, but it's just, this is something that I want you guys to think about. Jennifer and I have also reached out about another grant for parks and recreation, just to get some information. Uh, and they have a, uh, they have a workshop, uh, they're gonna have two of them. One on December the sixth and one December the fourteenth. The purpose of this is, I don't know if you have paid any attention or not, but being the historic guy that I am, we have started cleaning up the, the, the spring that we know that supplied water to the first people that came to this city. Uh, we know that, I think it's been cleaned up once before and then it grew up and it's, but that was one of my goals. It was also my sister's as well, she pushed and pushed, when I got in here, that's the first thing she wanted to see done, is that cleaned up. And so anyway, we thought about making it perhaps just a little type park recreation area for people to come. Uh, maybe picnic tables, gazebo, just something. Uh, we're gonna put a little information on what we know about the spring. I'm still trying to, and I don't know if I'll ever be able to find out who actually laid the rock. Uh, but we do, I do know that, uh, because it was recorded that James Roberson, who founded this city, uh, drank from that spring. So anyway, that's what I wanted just to bring out, let y'all think about, something, uh, if, if you might be interested, uh, uh, to take note that they're gonna have some workshops to, to help us apply for that. So that might be coming up in the future. You know more?
Yeah. We were talking about it right before the meeting, so we'll have some more information.
He's very aware of, he's very aware of that grant.
Okay, good. Good, okay. Uh, committee reports, city attorney, Kurt, you have any?
Nothing.
All right, finance? Alright, uh, finance, you got anything to report on?
Everyone was sent out a packet to review, and if you have any questions. Everything's heavy-handed, pretty much, with the city of Charlotte, taxes are doing payable in February, our taps come and go as they go. During the winter season, taps are kinda slow, spring, they'll pick back up again. Most of our, I mean, we have sales tax monthly, you know? Any other questions on that?
Do you think we could get to where we get, like, a monthly report with this packet? And it doesn't have to be in depth, but just.
Monthly report?
Maybe like a monthly financial report versus budget, or?
That's, that's possible, just gonna be more work on Jennifer, but.
Typically, we'll do quarterly reports every three months, quarterly reports is the norm.
We can try, get, let her do the, the quarterly, and then if that's still not sufficient, then I'll make her go to every month.
And that's also, so that I can, I can designate with the CPA, he can get those together for me, if something else is going on, or I can do those independently, things like that.
Anything else? Wastewater, you got anything? Anything other than what was on the minutes?
Nothing new.
Okay. Uh, streets and bridges, apparently, uh, there's nothing to report, 'cause he's not here. Uh, street lights and signs, I will tell you that, uh, we do have the new Cedar View, uh, street sign in, that separates the words.
Wow.
Uh, where it's not one word, it's two.
It used to be one word.
And, um.
It's always been one word.
We also, he had to carry it back with him, but he brought a sample of a new design for a street sign, and it won't be everywhere. Uh, but maybe around the square, that identifies the streets, Humphrey, Spencer, and things like that. It's actually gonna have the city of Charlotte logo with, uh, dome of the old courthouse on it. The only reason I don't have it, uh, here to show you tonight, is because when he put founded date on there, he put, well, he's changed it, but he put eighteen oh eight, and we were founded in eighteen oh four, so, but anyway, he's corrected it, and. But anyway, we did get that street sign, and, uh, Chad and him get that up whenever they can get to it. Public safety?
Garland, you wanna, you said something about that list?
Okay, I didn't know, yeah, uh, the list that the fire department provided for us, with things that, that they need. Uh, what I'd like to do is, hopefully you had an opportunity to look over that list. Uh, and what I would like to do is try to get your approval to go ahead and purchase. Uh, if you got your, you got a pencil handy there?
The only thing that I added to the, the one I gave y'all last month to this month, is the actual cost of the carport, because we do have trucks sitting outside, and, uh, the cost of the cameras that have gone up, and the cost of the batteries for our radios that have gone down. So, I don't know. That's why you have a new list.
Now, this, this approval doesn't include the top part. A paid firefighter, a new building, a pumper tanker, uh, and more extraction and rescue equipment. It doesn't approve those, though. Actually, there are three of those definitely, uh, looking into, to grant.
So.
To, to getting a grant, uh, to help with those. But, uh, again, the previous council, uh, I think allot's the fire and rescue thirty thousand dollars budget every year, and there's another twenty-nine thousand, uh, for them as well. And what I'm doing is just trying to get your approval, uh, to go ahead and, and look into purchasing, uh, these things. So.
What is the, the fifteen? Is that the total?
That we're talking about.
Yeah, that's the total amount. And take it, these things won't all be, they all won't be bought tomorrow.
Sure.
So, just, yeah. But now, there.
How much is it?
There is, there is one thing that, that I had already talked pretty strongly about with, um, him about, is the automatic tire chains. Uh, because we're getting close to winter time, and I, I've never put chains on those tires. I don't know how difficult it is, I'm sure it's not a very easy job, but, uh, it definitely make a response time, uh, cut a lot shorter if those chains can automatically be put on instead of manually.
Where'd you see the change?
The actual quote is on the next page.
I don't have it.
When he actually got me the final quote, it was three thousand.
Three thousand thirty-two?
Kenny Millet, he's one of the, he's one of the Fire Department.
The first, on the first page was just his estimate, then he gave, we got the measurements, and he gave me the actual price a few days ago, so. Take that, you.
Is that installed?
Yeah, that's installed, yeah.
Shannon.
What is this?
We are working, we want to, uh, put in a grant for airbags. So, that's the state started a grant system going on three years ago, or started a grant three years ago. They started out with five hundred thousand to fill in for volunteer fire departments around the state. Last year, they bumped it to a million, this year it's five million. It's based on, they're, they're pushing for safety, firefighters' safety. Turnout gear, airbags, things like that, then they bumped down. They, they prioritize the, uh, turnout gear, the airbags are priority one. Their medium priority is air compressors to fill the airbags, uh, gear washers, gear dryers, things that way. They pay seventy-five hundred dollars per airpack, which is ten thousand dollars a piece. Uh, our airbags, the majority of them were ma, manufactured in ninety-five, ninety-two, ninety-five, and two thousand eight. That's our newest airpack, that's what we breathe air from going inside. So, we can basically get almost forty thousand dollars worth of airbags, and that includes eight bottles and four masks for.
It works.
A grant. Now, there could be a price increase at the end of the year, we don't know. But we have to have, if we submit this grant, it has to be submitted by December first.
Alright, so, we're talking about bidding, I mean, passing this, is that what you're asking?
I'm, I'm, if, if I had, get a motion, uh, to go ahead and purchase the items on that list.
You said it.
Can I ask if you checked Tennessee Steel Buildings?
I make a motion.
I did, they gave me another price, but they did not answer the phone in the last two days.
But they're lower, aren't they? They're lower, aren't they?
A little.
Yeah, they're lower.
They are low, so.
Tennessee Steel Buildings is a cheaper. Well, I'm talking about Tennessee Steel Buildings in Sylvia Van Lier area, they're near the Sylvia. They did my carport, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, but that's a high price, so we can go with a lower one, I just, that's how I can get a price, or Kenny could get a price on it, he got the price on that. Um, Eagle Carports quoted me twenty-five sixty-four, I believe, but said that was a sale price, and they didn't know when the sale went in. It would roughly go up to about twenty-seven hundred to three thousand dollars. They haven't answered the phone, they may be off this week for the holiday.
Probably are.
To get an actual, a solid ticket.
It'd be worth it to ask Tennessee Steel Buildings, they're near the Sylvia Fire Department, it, to, it would probably cut that in half.
Well, yeah, that's why I threw the highest one I knew in there, because if we come in lower, great.
That's better.
If we save a thousand or fifteen hundred bucks, hey, we're gonna spend three, but we spent fifteen hundred, so. That's why I threw the bigger one in there, 'cause it's been on that list.
Ricky made a motion.
Yeah, well, they were, they were talking about the carport, they didn't hear, Ricky made a motion to go ahead and, and approve the purchase of the items on the list provided, Caleb second, all in favor?
Aye.
No? Motion passes. Uh, now, this grant, uh, well, it would, it would certainly help, since they've gotta have it, uh, turned in by December first.
Now, I did, Kenny and I sat down, we originally had ten airbags on the grant, so we figured how much we, the city was gonna have to pay, so we backed it off the board.
But.
And if we get the grant, and we get these bottles, you get two bottles per airpack, you get eight bottles, we would have to buy the.
The two, the two that's on there.
That's why it says hold until grant, till we know about the thing.
So, Kenny, are they breathing out air bottles, like, four-year-olds?
Yeah.
No, not the bottles, the airbags. The packs.
The bottles are, have a fifteen-year life.
And I guess the mask? Has the mask been replaced?
Uh, we actually did get a few new masks, um, probably about six or seven years ago, but we inspect them. We inspect them for cracks, any damage, anything like that, and we do replace what needs to be replaced.
Yeah.
And as far, as far as the airbags go, they're actually good as long as they flow test, and we flow test them every year. So, as long as they pass that test, they're good. Cumberland Furnace tested theirs with us this past year, my son worked a fire with those guys a month ago. When you turn the air bottle on, the high-pressure line blew on the shower. So, no telling how old the airpack is. And they, we're guessing, Kenny, we would find out about rewards sometime, February, March?
End of January.
End of January?
End of January first.
Do I need a motion to apply for this grant to purchase this equipment?
Designate, designate these funds for that grant.
Yeah. Uh, Turtle makes a motion? Need a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No? Alright, good deal, get, get going with that grant.
Yeah.
Get that on the road, alright, the next thing, uh, we have parks and recreation, beautification, I've already mentioned a little bit about that, uh.
New Christmas tree?
Uh, actually, too, uh, I am, I'm purchasing a new Christmas tree, that's gonna replace this one out here, outside. The one that's, it, it would be planted. Uh, that's not a Charlotte, Tennessee, Christmas tree, I want a Christmas tree that looks more like Charlotte. So, anyway, it should be here with about a week, I think.
Next week.
Uh, Brandy's, the, the girl that got the, the bid to do the, uh, gardening, she's gonna go and get it for us. Uh, planning and zoning, there will be, I mean, a meeting, that's the only thing I've got, I guess that we can mention that, there will be a meeting December first. Uh, construction, Caleb, how's your construction coming?
It's coming along.
I keep, I'm, I'm, man, I keep meming stuff up there to see if you're doing it right, but.
Jason's watching.
I, I know.
And everybody else is too.
I know, I'm, I'm trying to keep him, maybe keep him up your way, and so he don't venture down this way. But, uh, and, and by the way, uh, next week, my, my metal will be on my roof, so, uh, bring you, bring you wire pliers, and we gonna, we gonna do some wiring.
Get me a holly.
Uh, ambulance service?
No sir.
Uh, no sir, okay. Alright, uh, there's no wastewater meeting next month, nor is there a council meeting, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did that guy, did he get a hold of the guy? Did he call?
He called me.
Did?
Oh, thanks, thanks a lot.
Figured he would know.
Headed listening, it's one fine temperature, that's why we have gotten grants.
Yeah.
So, we got, we've got the news straight down, I've got a guy that's coming in, he's actually tonight, he is gonna do our, our roster in the, in the federal website. We should be doing, we've got all our properties.
Yeah.
They can do it. I think they can do it. I need to do some research, but I'm good, that's what I'm saying. I'm leaving all this here, and I'll get it tomorrow. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.